Six P M. We'll call this for the village board meeting and order. You all please join me in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Describe what you think, bro.
Trusty Nice. Trusty Try. Here. Trusty Ferguson.
Present.
Trusty Charo. Trusty, trusty Gerger. Here. Trusty Fletcher.
Here.
Village President Kinsey.
Present. Any public announcements this evening?
Last morning with Chad and Mary, we closed up by nine. Our fish fries were a success. We had record-breaking attendance, so thank you to the Chad community and some of the trustees that helped out during our fish fries. Next event coming up will be Memorial Day, but I'll have more time to explain that as we get closer. May fourth is the dedication of a historical marker for the Sons of American Revolution. More information will be coming about that. Okay. He actually just asked. Yes, then. Yeah, like. Okay. They told me not to forget, so. This Friday night is a music bingo. Starts at seven o'clock. They'll restart serving food at five, so if you want to come to the food beforehand, you can do that. And then on Saturday night, fourth, from nine A M. to one P M., is V F W. V F W. Day of Service. It's a food drive and we're collecting fifteen hundred pounds of canned goods and non-essential items. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any public comments on agenda topics? Hearing none. We have no old business. We have no new business. I will take a motion to consent agenda. Trusty Charo has made a motion, seconded by trustee Fletcher. Any discussion regarding the warrants or the mitts? Hearing none. Mr. Gerger?
Trusty Fletcher.
Yes.
Trusty Gerger.
Yes.
Trusty Nice.
Yes.
Trusty Try.
Yes.
Trusty Ferguson.
Yes.
Trusty Charo.
Yes.
Public comments on village business. Pat, you want to start the administrative report on the public comments here? I think we can start the other thing.
We've been working on the budget. We got it in a draft form. We've got highlights that we're going to present to you this evening. We're doing it a little bit different than we have in the past because we have no union contracts that we have to negotiate. So in two weeks, when we vote on this, we'll actually have a budget and ready to go in place by May first. So that's the plan. So we'll present this tonight, but it's still in a draft form so that if there's questions or things that you want to see changed or anything like that, you can talk to us over the next two weeks and we can turn around and try to incorporate those. Jim Michael is going to be here. He's going to talk about some of the stuff that we're going to be doing in the upcoming year with M F T. Also with trying to finalize out some of the money that we have left for Hart. And I've got full staff here tonight to talk about their different lines. Good.
I already made a motion to adjourn the village board meeting. Trusty Gerger has made a motion, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Charo. All clear. Aye, aye, aye. Main stage adjourned. Six oh five.
It is six oh five, exactly. Time to call the committee of votes to order. Roll.
Trusty Nice.
Present.
Trusty Try.
Here.
Trusty Ferguson.
Here.
Trusty Charo.
Present.
Trusty Gerger.
Here.
Trusty Fletcher.
Here.
Village President Kinsey.
Present.
All right. Any public comments on agenda topics? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to bring consent agenda to the table. Trusty Ferguson has made a motion, seconded. Seconded by trustee Try. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
No old business. We have some new business though. On C M T, engineering update is.
Jim's not here yet, so we can start on the budget and then he can follow up afterwards.
Welcome to the draft transfer. Or if you want to start on the.
Well, let's, yeah, let's do the draft transfer.
That one first.
Back.
No, the.
Yeah.
So this is our annual supplemental appropriation and appropriation transformers. We do this every year in April to make sure our budget is balanced. I ran, I did a preliminary review of all of our line items and they've been identified to be adjusted. I attached a spreadsheet that gave a summary of the transfers that I made to make sure that we are in balance. And ordinance will be prepared to approve those line item transfers and the supplemental appropriations in the next board meeting. Just a summary of the transfers that I made. So during this year, the village experienced many unpin costs due to hailstorm damage in May twenty twenty-three and then the deratio in June twenty twenty-three. I think I had a typo. That's in June twenty-four. I hope there's not another deratio.
I'm sizing them up.
The village submitted claims for all that hailstorm damage to insurance and we were reimbursed for all of that damage that occurred to village property for that damage. And then the village has also been working very hard with FEMA to submit all the deratio expenses for seventy-five percent reimbursement. And that was the biggest transfers that were shown on that spreadsheet. Basically, I just matched what we submitted expense-wise to FEMA. And I'm going to talk a little bit about more detail of what we submitted, what we expect to get back and what we're still waiting to hear on what we would get back. So basically, the supplemental appropriation will be funded through the increase in revenue received from insurance and FEMA. And we have not received all of that revenue yet. We've received the insurance proceeds for the village property, but FEMA, we're still waiting to actually receive the cash for that. And then we'll be using some cash on hand as well, just because FEMA will only reimburse seventy-five percent, up to seventy-five percent of those expenses. Supplemental appropriation is also being proposed for the water and sewer fund. The water expense may slightly exceed what was budgeted this fiscal year. I'm hoping it won't. I'm just making sure I have enough in there just in case it does. So I raised it up by a hundred thousand to cover that if it does exceed what I had in there. And then other smaller shifts between department lines for the general fund electric fund and water sewer fund are also made just to balance everything else out. So if I don't have any questions on my part of it, I'll have Diane come up and do the FEMA explanation or just give you guys a little more information on that. Obviously.
I don't have any questions.
If, if I, she takes a chance. Yes, if I don't have any questions, then somebody has some questions. Well, that's the way I see it.
Got two cents.
Yeah, that's right.
So to just give you an update on the FEMA process, we've been working with FEMA since August, September, after the deratio, to submit expenditures from the storm and potentially get reimbursed up to seventy-five percent. They break their, the storm up into different categories. So we submit projects for debris removal, for admin during the storm and for the utility system. And so we have submitted total expenses of five point one million relating to the storm. And that includes any expenses that we made, any purchases, rented equipment. We also get to submit for any salaries for individuals that work during the storm. And we also get to submit for any of our equipment. We get to apply a rate to it and potentially get reimbursed for village equipment that was used. And then any inventory that we have on hand and used during the storm, we can also submit that. So that's where the five point one expenditures have been submitted. We've closed out two projects, our admin during the storm and the utility system. And so FEMA has obligated so far one million and forty-four thousand dollars. That's been submitted to the state. They'll pass through and we're waiting for the state to issue a warrant for that money. We're still, still working with FEMA for the debris removal. We've had some questions with the contract and we're working through with them. And hopefully we can get that at least maybe finalized by the end of this month and then they'll go through their review process. And then we also have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar credo for the state that we are waiting on. Unofficially, we should be able to, the credo will be awarded, but the state's working through some of their processes and we're still waiting on, on that credo. But that's where we're, where we're at in regards to the, to the storm right now.
And sure, if we ask for a grant, what's it worth? I mean, is it covered by the five point one or is it an additional five point one?
It will cover part of the five point one. So since FEMA only covers up to seventy-five percent, we can use that two hundred and fifty for additional the twenty-five percent that we're essentially responsible for.
One other thing that you had mentioned was they would not let us submit the transformers that we lost and the cleanup of those transformers that, that broke. They said that should be covered by insurance. We went through the process with the insurance companies. They sent us a letter saying that those are not. We'll have to go back and resubmit that at the end, but that's about a hundred and forty thousand.
A hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So we are going to work to try to recover that as well. And actually, there is also a category Z which relates to admin costs after the storm, our time spent accumulating all of the information, and we can get up to five percent of our total award amount. So right now, we're kept at sixty, about sixty-two thousand, but since we haven't finished our debris removal, that amount could, could change, but so that's an additional money we could receive as well.
Any questions on the FEMA stuff? Is that what you were going to say? Sorry.
The timeframe on the seventy-five percent is probably year, years?
Well, we were surprised that we got the leverage. Okay, already. Yeah. So.
Without, without the money, we've got the approval.
Yeah.
But that's half, that's half about.
Well, that's more than half about.
Yeah, I mean, that you got that, that offer.
Yeah.
It's coming.
Yes, we're, we're hoping by, hoping by the end of this month.
We had a good phone conference with FEMA the other day and that was encouraging, so.
We'll take the money if we finish up.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of learning. Maybe spend a lot of time, the kids spend a lot of time on it.
As well as Trent and Dustin pulling all the data together and everything else, it was, it was. Not just that two-week, three-week period of, of storm and then cleanup, but it's been a carry-on. On top of all the other stuff that we try to get done, so.
They put about as many hours into trying to do the paperwork as it took in total to restore and clean up.
We.
We think about storms differently now. Remember they're coming at us.
Is there, is there anything like, is there an appreciation on what we've been used since?
That's basically what the rate that they calculate. It's basically the usage and like the wear and tear that you're, you're incurring on your equipment for the storm. So they have FEMA rates that they apply to each type of equipment. So we can put the number of hours that were used during the storm times that rate. And I think so, it's about ninety-seven thousand is what we say that we incurred in expenses using our equipment for the storm.
That's kind of nice that they really give you that back. It's almost like they're bringing the equipment for that ninety-seven thousand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, brother. And so we remove it of the budget then?
We are.
Yep. Nice, remove the budget. All right.
Okay. So this is pretty much the first couple of slides are the same as every year. All right. Summary of what we're going to talk about. So the fund structure, the budget process, budget goals, and then the overview of all the highlights that Pat said we will touch on tonight. So our fund structure, which we focus on, our general electric and water fund. So the general fund falls under our governmental funds and then the electric and water and sewer fall under our proprietary funds. And then you see there's a few other smaller funds in there that we touch on too. Budget process, so during February, that's when I kind of started gathering all the information on revenues and expenses preliminary-wise. So we've put a lot of things together as far as just looking at what the debt service is going to look like for the upcoming year, our electric, water and sewer expenses, the big, the big expenses that come for those, you know, estimating last year's and versus what it's going to be next year. And then overall, we, we generally use a three percent increase over the last budget year just to account for inflation that happened to all of, you know, for all of our vendors this upcoming year, whether it's maintenance or, you know, just recurring expenses. So some of our, some of our budgets did remain the same. I worked really closely with Dustin and Burn and they, you know, we analyzed these and we said, do we need more in there this year? And they said, no. So some, some of them we did stabilize a little bit more than we had before. So I know these accounts like the back of my head. It's very, very, I get very detailed into them and what we needed and they will attest to that. So in March, so that's when we kind of got some rough things put together as far as materials for Pat and I to look at and also Dustin and Burn. Kind of giving them what I thought we needed. And then we had a couple of meetings in March for them to come back and give me feedback on what I gave them, line by line. And then just the beginning of this month, we did our final meetings with them, kind of like finalized everything that we talked about in March and then tweaked anything they needed to expense the March meetings. So then that brings us to tonight where we're talking about the PowerPoint, which is kind of our draft form to give you guys what the budget is going to look like this next year in terms of highlights. A copy of the draft budget ordinance is in the utility office, so if anybody wants to see that, they can go in there and look at it. And that is what will be voted on next board meeting. And then starting tomorrow through the seventeenth, so that's sometime next week, I mean, it's a Thursday or Friday of next week. If the village board has any questions on what we presented tonight or anything that you think of comes up, you guys can meet with us to talk about that in that time period. And then I've got April twenty-third board meeting as required by state statute. A public hearing is held to allow the public a final opportunity to provide any input regarding the budget. And then the annual appropriation ordinance is voted on. Like we said, this is a little different this year. We usually wait a couple of months in actually. So I was able to gather this stuff fast and try to get it together for us to pass before May first.
Caitlin, do you remember if the public hearing is at six or did you say?
I think six, yeah. We just did six this year. Okay. Next, just same. We always talked about budget goals include customer service, performance, economic development, quality of life. And then I've got our pie chart of the revenues for the year. So we go down the line. Our biggest is the general fund at eight point nine million. Our electric fund is eleven million and then water and sewer fund, I'm estimating seven point six million, making the total of thirty million dollars for the year to come in. And then next slide is the expenditures, estimating about ten million in the general fund, twelve million in the electric fund and then eight million in the water fund. As you saw, our, as I always talk about, our, our revenues are very conservatively estimated and expenditures are often slightly overestimated in order to be physically responsible. Typically, all funds end up, you know, close to breaking even at the end of the year and have a slight surplus to build up a three-month cash reserve, which we found is very important this last year. We needed that cash reserve for storm expenses. So we need to continue to try to do that each year for all the funds. So the, so because the expenses are higher than the revenues, that's attributable to some things that happen in the budget. Like I said, we are overestimating expenses and that, the reason for that is because we have items in there that aren't intended to be financed with restricted cash that we already have on hand, the issuance of debt or fund reserves when cash is not produced to fund those things that we're, we're budgeting for. So note, something to note too, expenditures are contingent on the fund's revenue performance, some of them. The department head and the finance department will continue to monitor those funds' revenues throughout the year to determine if certain expenditures are possible. We do have some of those where we kind of watch things and make sure we're okay to go ahead with them as long as we're bringing the revenue we expected. So the few items that kind of make up that difference in expenditures versus revenue include, we're planning to do a five hundred thousand dollar transfer to capital projects this year. Similar to the prior years, we're moving money to save for future projects. We've got an estimated liability related to accrued benefits. So I always have to budget for all of our employees' time on the books, their vacation time, their sick time. Whether they're going to use it or not, that has to be there in case they were to leave in the year. We have to pay them out for those things. So that makes up a pretty large chunk of our, our budget there and we won't necessarily use all that. So that's part of that. And then we've got grant expenditures. We've got some art butt in there this year again and a few other ones that we'll touch on. And then we've got potential finance items, which includes vehicles totaling approximately three hundred thousand dollars. So all of those items together make up approximately three point one three million and that'll lessen your deficit there that I kind of showed between the revenues and the expenditures.
Isn't that finance stuff that's, what, a good portion of three hundred is one electric truck?
And that is the, yep, that's the electric truck. So.
Since, since we have cash and then straighter high, the vehicles and stuff that were, were added to the budget this year, we're paying cash.
Mostly cash, yeah, yeah, except for that one. But we won't, we won't even get that one this year. It's just a place.
Probably in two years.
Place holder, yep. Okay, so the next slide is our revenue versus expenditure history trend and then the twenty twenty-five budget estimated. So as you can see, the purple and green, those are our actual revenues versus expenditures. So if you look at twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we always end up bringing in those more revenues than expenditures, even though the blue and the red, the budgeted, it's always showing the expense at higher than the budgeted. I'm sorry, higher than the revenue. And then if you'll look at twenty twenty-four projected, we are showing the expense will be higher this year, but that is due to the FEMA expenses that were not budgeted. So we are planning to get that revenue back, but it's just not going to come in this year. So we will see that come in next year.
The other thing is any revenue that we're bringing back right now from FEMA is not built into this budget.
Right.
So we're not counting on using those funds whatsoever.
What should happen is the green line should be way higher than twenty-five because you're getting all the FEMA money you've spent. It's not twenty twenty-four, so it'll be posted in twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
Hopefully.
Your, your actual like revenue expenditures should be a little more balanced than, or, you know, higher up than what it normally is. So that's.
Pat, Pat, you said that's going to go with social projects or is that money contained?
We'll move that to the capital projects fund, so. And then.
I mean, it'll replenish the funds.
Yeah, it'll replenish the rest of the funds. We'll have to feed back stuff into the electric fund because we cut into that three-month revenue. We only have two months, I think, backup when we get to that. But the other funds that, there were funds expended from it, we'll replenish those back in there. Let anything over that go back into the capital projects fund.
Okay, so then, as I said, we've got our three major funds. I was going to bring you Pat up to talk about some of the administration elements that he wants to talk about for grant stuff.
The first ones are the funds. I wish we could get our but every year.
No, it's because of what we had to go through to get it.
No, no.
Sure.
It's been a goss into the village because it's allowed us to purchase stuff that we could use or upgrade things that we would never have enough money in the budget to be able to take care of. And we've got approximately eight hundred and seventy thousand left to spend and we have enough projects lined up to be able to spend that this year. One of them is a carryover from the water tower, put a generator out there so that we mightn't worry about power going out and we get able to pump water back into town and everything.
They started that this month and they're going to continue it.
The biggest project will be the pickleball, pickleball court renovations. We're setting aside roughly three hundred thousand dollars to work on that project. We're going to repair the bad spots that are out there now, come back, pour concrete to be able to have where all the posts are going to go, put a four-inch overlay of asphalt over the top of it, then power company come in and paint all the courts. There'll be sixteen, replace in eight. We're in the fence, the giant fence will come down, the nice fence that goes around it, planning on bleachers being out there. It'll be the nicest pickleball courts, I think, around in central.
So. Okay, just a quick question. You're indicating you're going to do the whole thing now?
We are going to do the whole thing and we'll take all the donations that we can get from the pickleball people.
Okay.
I don't want to take the risk of.
Them not giving money.
Or, yeah.
I can tell you they're fifty grand.
Yeah, they already have them.
Yeah.
So that's great. That, that will help replenish things in the park or be able to add us to do other things in Arba that we, we have been reserved in case we need to be able to get to.
It's a similar person, most of his budgets. We make sure we got enough to get everything done, which is overestimating on the expense. And then that's how you start to draw back to what Caitlin shows.
But if you're thinking about donating to the football, continue to do it because all that's going to do is make that area out there better.
We have the, we have the house, regardless of where you're going to come from.
Got it.
Other things in Arba, the experimental overlay that Jim's talked about, we're going to do Keystone in Breckenridge. We usually don't buy new administrative cars. We usually take cars from the water department or electric department or the police department and try to make that work. We have not had new vehicles for the administrators. I can, I know as long as I ever worked here, it has not been that way. So we're going to get a car for Trent, Dustin, Casey and, and Eric. And then we should have enough money left over to, to pay for a third police car for the police department. That's the lone police car there. Sidewalks and renovations, we're still going to plan on spending some of that money on redoing the bike paths, sidewalks, all of that stuff through community park as well as on the bike trail. One of the things that we found after the last storm was we really could have used a generator across the street and the way the girls could have stayed in the office and continued to answer the phones and help with things where the power was out for a long time over there, where we had the generator running over here within minutes. So we're going to put a generator over there. It'll be a smaller one. It could be portable if we need to take it some. So we're going to put a generator over there. It'll be a smaller one, it could be portable if we need to take some place else. And police radio equipment and SCENA software.
Pat, he says if it could be portable or will it be portable?
It will be portable.
I think that I was saying the same thing when I was, when you moved in.
Well, it's like the one back here, if we sell this building, we may not want to get rid of that generator. We may want to take it with us, push it down the shops, and the shop's half our done, so. Senator McCord got us a grant a few years back, that was the money that we used to purchase some of the properties over on the South Side Square to turn around and do the demo. Or just the demo, I'm sorry, just the demo and remediation where we found some, some asbestos. We still got eighty-six thousand on that, but we have to spend it on that piece of property over there. So until we get into a building mode, we can't spend that money. But they said, hey, there isn't the nine point one, so.
Jim, is that Keystone or do you tire it, Keystone or just the South Side?
Entire Keystone.
No, the south.
What?
It's called the set, we're not doing the north side.
No, yeah, so screws, south.
That's the worst part, I just don't assume that, but I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the worst one. Should be doing some surveying there next week, so we're going to digitally scan the payments and get good grades, cross slopes on that, so we have a good indication in terms of correcting the crown and putting as much material there as possible to give it the best chance of success.
The administrative department for fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, we're going to move five hundred thousand dollars in excess funds into the capital project. Last year we moved a million, so that's starting to accumulate, starting to get a nice, nice fund there. And that's about it. The plans are, and, and we'll talk, Jim will talk about it a little bit, of the progress of them putting RSQ together, us getting architects in here or whatever, picking one that we like, the building that they've designed, and for them to put together a set of plans, so that we have a construction set, ready plans, ready to build. And then find out whether we're ready to move forward with building or whether the cost is too much, so. That's where we're at.
And that goes with this one?
Yeah. Oh, and we have DCO grant, and that will pay for the architect and the engineers to the tune of six hundred seventy-five thousand. It better not cost that much.
I have, I do have a question, on, on the projects that she chose up there on the administrative department. Is there a, does it consolidate a list of the projects or in the waiting for, for mine?
Is there what?
Because we like, you picked out pretty much seven of our projects you're going to do. So do we have a list of like eight or ten what, what we're not going to do?
Well, we, we didn't say we weren't going to do it, they're just there if, if there's money available.
Right, I'd just like to see what the other projects are that we, we have in line.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, we do have some work.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to, like, um, ten more of them.
Um, then Dustin wants to come up?
And there are both of those on that list were street repairs and sidewalk repairs that we had. And some of those sidewalk repairs have also been other projects, we came before those, we're already doing a lot of road work with MFT program.
And then I was just curious to see what. Cause I knew, I knew two years ago we had like a huge list.
Yeah.
So being on the rise to, not to see what we parked off and what we, what we're going to leave for next year.
We knew we had some big ticket items that we had to take care of, so.
One of the first things, since I've been in here with Pat, we've brought a lot of money into the bike path, and I think it's been, done a great job with that. We want to do a three staff this year, put three thousand, fifty thousand, one or two more. So this year we'll do a little bit more and see where we get it, and hopefully in the future years we can do the same. We had the grant two years ago, we put a sidewalk in West Park and we stopped writing the little art, we didn't have that money. So the last couple of years are best, Pat, if we could have some money to go ahead and finish that sidewalk. This year we got to do that, so I'm excited that we'll get to finish that and loop that sidewalk all the way through the park. We have residents that walk it now, we go to the end and turn around and come back, and we continue to park them a lot and make a lap, so it'll be kind of nice for them. Concession repairs, the soccer and football building has stucco on the outside and the exterior. It's got cracks, it's chipping away, so we've got a couple of different quotes and estimates. And we're still working on what the best method would be to repair that, but we have thirty thousand in there not to exceed that to get that repaired and do the best we can so we can go on the life of that building. Design upgrades, so last year we, we had two new Welcome to Chatham signs put in. We're going to continue with the same style signs and work through the parks, the cemeteries in the future. We have forty-nine thousand dollars, I think we're also going to maybe repaint one out here that's chipped away for a few years or as long as it takes, but we have a new building. And then we're going to probably add a few signs to the parks, start with, Chatham Community Park will probably have three new signs this year. That's what we use that one for.
On the, on the signs?
Yep.
Uh, the electrical upgrades on the signs, are we doing that too?
We have electric at the one on Gordon Drive, and we have electric at the one on, on Route Four. The one out at the, out by the school is R A C C electric. And if we get a light for it, we'll have to do something that's solar out there.
So when the bi-lack lights went in, we had two brandy lights put in on the route for something with an outlet, there's an outlet and a light on the Gordon Drive.
Do you have the others on, on Iron Bridge?
That's the one I was talking about, Gordon Iron Bridge, so, yeah, so that one's ready to go. So they're actually going to come port curb around that next week. So I'm gonna deck it curb, and then in the next fiscal year of May, we'll put some rock in there, maybe some, some plants or something, so we're working on that. And then Nick requested, he has two old motors that he replaced, so we have two zero-turn rotors in there to replace ones we already have that were out. And then on to the street department, I think some board members brought up painting bi-lack, and staff agreed, and we all talked about it. We have sixty thousand dollars to paint, uh, power wash and paint, so.
Watch, sixty thousand dollars worth of brushes and paint, so.
So you guys are going to.
Are we doing some of that day labor for the school?
What, should we need to pick the color?
We have not picked the color.
Yeah, so we took the color and design, we were all good.
We were thinking solid, but.
I was really gay, I thought we were all going to fix the school above, title, nation, Chatham, Illinois, you know?
I think if you want, if you want graffiti, put all that on a bi-lack, okay? That's right off of the public back panel.
We want something festive, like mural or something, you know, we need that angel wings and all that.
We only have sixty thousand, we only get to do it once, so we have to paint over it.
John's going to talk for the high school kids.
He's a, he's a little artist.
Which ones is he going to talk to, the ones that are going to put graffiti on? Who wasn't going to paint it originally or after?
Not our classes.
We'll pick a very nice color.
Yes.
Thank you for your help.
I'm going to slip around on that list a little bit, a few of these, a few of these items off, down here go together. So two tailgate salt spreaders, a street pickup truck and a new plow. Basically what our objective there is, we have two old plow trucks that throw salt in from nineteen, they were nineteen ninety-six GMC Topix. They're, they're worn, and I don't even want them on the road anymore. So we looked at last year buying a large cannon, it came in at two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and we didn't think that that was good for the village because we only use that much stuff. So we said, let's get a pickup truck with the plow and then take some of our old trucks, put the salt spreaders on them. It was cheaper, and I think it actually were useful in the end, so that was the new plan. Also Harley rake, which is just basically an attachment for our skid steer that will level dirt, polarize it, so then when we do large blocks, we can go in you know, make it nice and fine and seated. And last, last year we started the street sign maintenance program where we're replacing more signs, we invested more money into that program. Last year we're going to continue that this year, making more of the signs reflective for the police department, so us feeling the signs are reflective, replacing street signs. And we're going to continue to work on that, so. That's all I have, so we get the water, which will be a little bit, thank you.
Did you have your.
That's pretty quick.
You only have two things, that just doesn't seem right.
It's not, it's not.
You're getting a lot more than two things.
But as you can see, obviously, yeah, I am requesting a dispatch supervisor for our police department. And also with that dispatch supervisor, they will oversee, my biggest concern is we will be receiving a body cam from here at the end of the month. And what we have, what we found with other departments talking to them is LaFoya and body cam and such. So we want to look at that, and we want to hire a person to fill that position to oversee dispatch and also take care of the body camera actions and our car camera systems as well, so that's a, that's a big, it's a big ask for us in that department. The other thing you obviously see up there is two squad cars. Obviously we've done a really good job these past few years, we've replaced our squad cars and keeping them up to date. That's why I'm asking for that to continue to improve our fleet, so. That's all I'm asking for this year.
In the revenues, though, more than four is going to also, that's not coming, it's basically through, right?
That's the goal, definitely getting two from the general fund, and if there's enough funds there to get the fourth, or the third, I'm sorry, out of ARPA.
So we have six cars, hopefully very good to police department and very good to admissions.
So, so four, three, four, and then three, just group police squad. My, my third squad car, I think we purchased, we purchased add-on the next budget.
If you look on that spreadsheet for ARPA.
Yeah.
Says one police car there.
Do you guys understand the added position to deal with the body camera and all that?
Yes, it makes sense.
What that is, it's what Chief is saying, he's from the percenter, scheduled to have the equipment and have done already. It's taking an additional person full-time to handle video-based player requests and editing and. It's the wrong word, blocking, redaction, that's the word, I was like, redaction, where it's going to be redacted. Keeping, keeping it all up, doing everything up, so it's, it's creating additional positions.
Mara, sit down with her.
You have Kayla, so you don't have any questions?
Next up is the electric department, it's the first time I've had to go in there and get set a budget for the electric department. So myself, Kayla, and Ryan Sliden put a lot of time together to be able to go over things and make sure everything was right. We also hired our consultants, B H M G, and that's them to review some of the stuff and everything, so. We reached out to CWLP to find out what the status was of our two substations and what maintenance and what testing needed to be done at those. And you'll see those items are reflected here in this list. And utility services and consulting, that's the company we hired out of New Hampshire that is helping us get our one thirty-eight line registered. We are getting extremely close on that. They were in such a big hurry at first, but now, and not the, not the engineers, but, but Ferb was in such a big hurry. But I think they like this firm, so they trust that they're putting stuff together the right way. So we've had a good working relationship with them, I M E A, and also with CWLP, so proud of that. Electric system assessment consulting, we're putting a hundred twenty thousand in the budget. It's essentially the same as what we do with CM two, put money in the budget every year for engineering services. And B H M G is going to be those engineers. It doesn't mean we're going to spend all that, it just means that we budgeted that amount to be able to bounce that, their bills off of the CWLP relay testing and substation equipment. To be able to get us all up to speed and I think good for the next five years, it's going to cost sixty-two thousand six hundred dollars. And they will do most of that relay testing and equipment inspections. Meter reading software. The software that we've had that goes out and, and our meter reader rides around with an electronic device in his vehicle and picks up all those little antennas that you see hanging from our street lights and stuff like that. They've got an upgrade to that, and with that upgrade and that software, we'll be able to push a button in the office and read a lot of them now directly back to the office, so we won't have those. We won't have same day, same time, so we could set it up so that there's, you know, some months you see on your bills that was, there's thirty-four days, thirty-five days. Ones that are working on that system, it will just say thirty, thirty-one, whichever it is.
Right, how many, how many will that be, three days? How percentage wise will we have?
I think they said at least sixty percent of the electric will get read that way, and we're not exactly sure on the water, the number's going to go up, but you're trying to read the electronic device that's in a pit in your front yard or in your basement or in your crawl space. So once we get that up, we may have to add some more, what do you call it?
They'll go, they'll be cellular if they're hard to read, that's what the new system allows us to do, instead of using radio.
Yeah.
So, so Pat, is that, is that an annual upgrade or is that just this one-time upgrade? I mean, how, how does the software company explain that?
It's annual.
There's an annual portion.
We're already paying a portion of that now.
There's annual maintenance of the software, but this is an upgrade, I'm just wondering, are they, are they planning an upgrade for next year?
So technically right now we swing like, what, twenty-five thousand?
I think it's fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah, and, but I think part of the thirty is an implementation cost, I don't remember exactly what the number is. I can look that up.
I just, one of us wanted to see if it'd be, software companies, like I say, upgrade this year and then upgrade this year.
It's been a while, it's when we started using, my stuff was the last time we had a, a bigger upgrade.
As much needed, we, we need this new software. But you're correct, we pay this every year, it won't be a total of thirty, we don't believe next year, but we obviously haven't seen that figure yet.
Again, and, and there's a maintenance to it, but again, I deal with this in my job all the time, it's like how many times, a month, how many times a year do I have to upgrade your software as opposed to maybe use annually? I'd like for it to be part of my maintenance plan, that's a, we'll pay something extra for it, but it's a.
And most of ours is that way.
Yeah.
Once you've done that upgrade, that maintenance fee stays the same for a long time. But when you do that one big upgrade, it's just, they like to come back and attach it for a little bit.
Training and that too is involved, so.
Skid steer, the guys have talked about, they use skid steer in the electric department for a long, long time. And finally, we have enough money set aside for them to be able to get in there and do that.
For the year, there's, but we spent a lot of money on maintenance for it, and it doesn't make sense to continue spending maintenance money on that, so.
And the thing the guys were excited about was this skid steer loader that I'm hearing it is. What they think that's it, isn't it, Dustin, that they use out when it clears the brush and stuff like that, or is that?
It like chops up the brush.
They, they went into some of the easements and right of ways that we have like pine houses and started running this thing. And it takes all the little saplings and weeds and everything else and just crunches it all the way down to the ground. So before, when we had the storm, and we had to get guys to go in and clear the way to be able to get trucks and stuff in there. Now they're going to do a maintenance program of trying to keep all those clear, especially in the areas where we don't have a lot of burial, and stuff like that. And we lost Shane last year and we lost Troy Bell. The guys currently think that they have enough staff to be able to do the job. But they haven't gone through the summer with just four of them. So we're going to put in potential for a new line at the halfway point, and we'll evaluate that. If they still don't think they need it, we'll hold off. But right now, we're meeting all the demands, and since we replaced a lot of stuff during the storm, we've had a lot less outages, so.
The goal of the water sewer fund, one hundred percent is to conserve and have a cash reserve. So we tried to do absolutely no extra spending at all. The meter reading software upgrade was explained by Pat, and we had a lease for our mini estuary that we did our water taps with. It was, and the cheapest option for us was to buy it, so it would probably double that. So we're going to pay. So we're gonna pay it off and keep it and try and use it personally as we can. Just in the water sewer, thank you.
Otherwise, budget highlights, garbage recycling, remedies program. Because we awarded a new contract for five years last year, so we know what we're gonna have to pay on that. The only thing that will change over this next year is the streets we were looking to use. Uh, that was paid for out of green fund and we've got, uh, it was a five-year lease, uh, leased to Home Run. And, uh, and we will end up paying that off in, what, about five months ahead of the year. So we won't have payment on that going forward. Uh, the thing is still, uh, in good enough shape that we can use it, so we will continue to use it and do repairs until, uh, the repairs cost more than, we'll do the steps and get new. Cemetery provincial fund, uh, that's the money that we make off of, of, uh, all our burials. Our, our selling the graves, I should say, because we don't really make any money off of. Yeah. Off of the actual burial. We, we're gonna start allocating eighty percent of those funds that we receive to take care of the cemetery and also possibly construct a mausoleum for cremations. If you look at cemetery now on the maps, uh, we've got maybe a hundred fifty to two hundred in the lower area and then the whole top area, which will hold about a thousand or graves. We have not opened that up. We were thinking of putting this, uh, mausoleum in a portion of that up there that people, they cremated instead of getting buried in the ground. These mausoleums will be set up so they'll be like four high, so you can have four, four, build it into a wall, you can have benches. Four Paul Staub left, she kind of gave me an idea and plan of what they can do down there. We didn't really have money to be able to do it at that time, but it's probably a good time that we do get in conjunction probably sometime in the next year, raising the fees for the cemetery. Uh, we'd love to see what's being filled with some of the surrounding communities charge and we're way low compared to them. So we've noticed that, uh, seems to be more non-residents are being buried in our cemetery. And I don't know if it's because it's ardent or if they have relatives here. So that we need to look at within that year. Motor fuel tax funds. We've got four hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six that we're planning on spending this year. And that's not a clue, they build the America money that, that, and we would.
Rebuild that one.
Rebuild the, what did I say?
That was like eight years ago.
Details.
It's a bottom program.
Yeah. So that, that's the MFT stuff. And the last one on the list, this Trent's gonna talk about his safety stuff as he's, or his safety officer, he has the safety director stuff. He's got a budget for both.
I did not make a slide for you.
You gotta do it from memory, like, like the build the America money.
But I worked hard on your budget. It's all, all in there on the title.
Um, so as we start up in August with the new safety manager position, uh, put a lot of work into it at this point. And we're needing a lot of headway with all the departments, bring them up to speed. So on our budget for the safety side, it comes up to a total of forty-two thousand, two hundred. Um, that's gonna cover about seventeen thousand in personal protective equipment. That's a annual reoccurring as they wear out and Scott was the optimist of having proper reflective in your letter. Um, we can replace that and polish that for a lot of employees. We also have, uh, hazardous, uh, storage capabilities that we need to increase or improve with each one of our departments. So we have six thousand set up for that, the additional cabinets in there so they can start properly scouring some of the materials they have. Which they've done a really good job in the last three months of cleaning up, cleaning house, if you would, uh, based on our housekeeping policy that we now have with the village. Um, although we do not have a confined space, our, our confined space policy is we do not enter. Uh, we still have some work that they do have to do, some air monitoring, um, when they're trying to work on the sewer system, uh, drainage areas or even replacing or fixing makeup, watering. There's gotta be some type of air monitoring that takes place in that pit that they're gonna be reaching out into or doing within the working environment. So, so air monitoring device, uh, is right around eighteen hundred. Um, and then I focus the rest of everything is portable eye wash stations, um, portable ADBs so that they will be on the work site as opposed to having one sitting back at the shop. Um, and then portable work site safety barriers, it's a, a system that can be carried on the truck, expandable and provides them a barrier that can keep, uh, anybody or vehicle stopped. A vehicle's gonna be able to go through it, it will show that this is our workspace and, uh, to stay out of that areas, so. Um, and then on the emergency management side, uh, as Pat alluded to, we talked about, talked about the need for a generator across the street. Uh, as we found that that would have been a bonus course on the taracial. Um, we have two pieces of equipment, a portable generator, uh, don't want it to be too big, but also a battery backup system for our communications repeater, so that way our communication doesn't go down right from the start. We spent a little bit of time wondering, well, I can't end by hearing. Um, and then the last thing, um, something that's happened to us here a couple of times now is our outdoor sirens have, uh, been impacted by lightning, so I requested five thousand dollars to be put into a outdoor silent budget as opposed to, uh, asking Pat if we could steal from Vern before he knows that he even lost his, uh, budget, so. Any questions? I'm not even.
So this is the first year we've got your budget, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so what I did with his is, uh, all the departments, he gave me what each department needed and each department has a category of safety operations, so I split his budget up accordingly for what the departments.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job as well, Ben.
Well done.
Pat, we wanna call you up on one time.
You can, yeah, absolutely. Or you can get an email, whatever you wanna do, e- either way.
I like the old way where, you know, I'm gonna come in and you can just sit down and talk.
We, we expect every time, anybody comes, bring food.
An email itemized of this, not we only get post.
Yeah, so like what you vote on, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Like an itemized breakdown of what we're used to getting. That's supposed to be good during that meeting usually. Well, we usually get it before that meeting.
Do you mean the ordinance, is that what you're talking about, or?
No, just like the itemized breakdown of, of what this goes.
Oh, oh.
Cause I mean, this is a great overview.
Yes.
This is not where we're drilling down and finding out.
Yes, if you, that was like seeing like more detail, what's talked about like in our meetings. If you guys wanna meet with us about that, or I can meet with Pat on what we can, uh, email out to you guys on that stuff. Um, it's, it's a little different this year just cause, um, we're doing it so quick, so. I have like literally all the account breakdown, um, oh, you know what she's talking about, the highlight, the word documents, I think.
We just, I mean, cause usually you get like a little bit more itemized detail of what makes us some of these numbers.
Yes.
Instead of just.
It's pretty much what's in the PowerPoint, um, there's not a whole lot of extra things in there, um.
She's wanting to see the actual budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like the GL accounts and all the line items in there.
That's usually what we see, we, we see it every year.
Yeah.
The, the thing is, is those, they don't have a description of all of the items that gets purchased through that account. So say for instance, like Vern's, uh, parts, like for his vehicles, okay? It doesn't say all of the different parts and how much she spends here, how much she spends there. It just says, it'll have a number and then it'll have eighty thousand dollars.
Well, we, I just like to see what we, what we've done with Pat.
We can talk about, yeah, we can talk about what you're trying to look for. I'm just not sure what you saw last time that I'm trying to think.
We, we usually get a little bit more detail than, than this, so whatever you gave us last year that gives us a little more detail.
Yep.
That's what I would like to see.
Yep.
Um, because, I mean, we've got the additions and additions are great, but it's sort of like, I liked it, I like, I like the version that I have.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, we can do that.
In the end, in all balances, and we have money left over to be able to put in the capital projects fund. Do we have three months backlog, log, uh, of, we don't. But the general fund, we're what, two and a half?
No, general fund has three months.
Has three?
Yeah, yep.
The electric, I think, is at two.
Has almost two, yeah.
And water is hours.
Building, we're building.
We're working on it.
We're not, we're not falling behind in the water.
Yeah.
You know, it's an opportunity for everybody to reach out to us, that, you know, the presentation is usual, so.
Yeah.
Always good.
I think it's for Word docs, it's probably.
I think, I think that's what she's talking about, yes, we have those, we do. Yep.
Can we email those or do we email them?
I think we can email.
Yeah.
Yep.
And move further on the budget. All right, so.
Jim's, Jim's relaxed. I know we covered some of your stuff, we slowed your thunder.
Yeah, we covered most everything in there, um.
You could, you could go over the pickleball, we just touched on the amount that we had.
So pickleball, uh, we're gonna work with the village group and, uh, we'll do that work, uh, mostly in-house. A lot of the type of work that we're gonna be doing is similar to what was done over the J C Spark, where we're gonna excavate around the court, put in a concrete kind of retainer, um, foundation around there. We're also gonna map out all the locations of nets, uh, fence posts and so forth, and then put in concrete foundations for those. Right now, if you're familiar with it, a lot of the posts were just driven into two-inch asphalt and dirt. We're leaning on the fence, here we go, um, so we're gonna fix that. And we're gonna do that with, uh, the street crew, working with the street crew, met with Dustin Pat this morning and, and looking at economical ways, um, and easy construction ways to do that so we can economically do, do the work in, uh, in-house. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, this summer, doing that work, uh, getting it prepped, so in the fall we can pave it and then the sports, uh, company can do the service on top, so everything's completed this year, so. As Pat said, we're at, uh, the three, three hundred, three hundred, three hundred thousand, uh.
We're gonna do that all in-house.
Except the pay, the sex work, okay.
Except the pay, except the pay.
Yes, so all the prep work, foundation work, everything else, we're gonna do it in-house.
The fence will be far in that fall, so.
So, um, by the time they're done, you won't be able to see anything that we did.
Yeah.
That's right.
But if it never ever cracks, they.
That's what, that's the best, yeah. The point is, we hope we never see what our crew did. There you go. It's in good hands. Um, so some of the other projects, uh, we're obviously gonna talk about Palmer, uh, looking at doing that. Uh, we're still looking at, uh, MFT, wanna talk about that a little bit, uh, adding to.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about this.
Do we know what plumbers do with that? We're in the process of environmental reviews right now. As those are done and they'll, uh, there are no bats. We did the bat survey, there are no bats, it's good for us, for them. Um, so one of the things that we talked about with the, uh, you know, ARPA money is, is we're going back and forth. We're originally talking about maybe extending plumber, um, and throwing about two hundred thousand dollars of that to that, but that was allocated to the projects over here. One option that we do have is to circle back with MFT and incorporate two hundred thousand dollars with MFT money and extend that under the same contract, combine that with the RBI money and extend that through, hopefully we can get over to Park, uh, from Ravina over to Park, uh, with that addition. So if that's something that the board likes entertained, what we would do is amend the, uh, maintenance setup to maintenance resolution, include that additional two hundred thousand in overlay, allocate that towards Palmer Boulevard and continue that project out a little bit further. And we talked about it with ARPA money, ARPA money was appropriated to these projects. We do have the funds for MFT to be able to do that, so, um, you know, if that's blocked, if that's something that we wanna move forward with, we can bring. You know, you know that, that what you're actually getting, you know how much. The problem is, using the MFT money, if we bid it, that's for this project. Then you wanna add MFT money, that is, you need another project, and then you have to bid that project, so it's not like.
And we don't have to accept that second one, correct? If we think the bids are too high? If for the two hundred thousand of additional?
We would, to do the plans, we would still have to go through and allocate that to the maintenance resolution and have that money available for that project. So if bids are too high, I mean, if we wanna do two separate projects, we can do two separate projects, put them both out on the street, bid one, and the other one just sit on the side and not award it. Or combine them both into one larger project with RBI and MFT money under the same project.
Or we can hold off and, and put a larger chunk into MFT next year and take care of it in a project.
And just keep marching after it.
So, so we give you guys that option, whether you wanna do it or not. The, 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 the big thing is, is if the prices come in low for the asphalt work this year, we'd love to be able to throw another two hundred thousand and see how much farther we can go. If those prices come in high, should we, should we wait another year?
And the nice thing with RBI money, or the, our, our, nice thing with the ARPA money is that's just, go ahead and do it. You know, it fits in the project, go ahead and do it, there's no strings, there's no approvals. You, if you wanna do it as a village, you can do it as a village, it's not discretionary money. Whereas anything that's MFT or RBI related has to go through every step of I dot and approval of I dot all the way through, like looking for bats under a bridge that we're gonna overlay. So it's just the process, so.
And we had the discussion and we had to decide between doing the experimental thing on Keystone and do an extra, I mean, whatever feed it is of asphalt. And I thought it would make more sense to do the experimental because if we get that down and it works, we can, we can knock out a lot more streets in the future than, and what we've, we've gotta do it again.
Gotta try it.
Yeah, we were talking.
And we can't use MFT funds for that until they, they agree that it's approv, a proven, uh, process.
It's not so much the mix or the asphalt, or the fibers in the asphalt, it's hitting a runway base that's completely gone. And most people would say, no, that's not worth money, putting asphalt, good asphalt on a completely deteriorated base. Now, if it holds up, okay, under a low-volume cul-de-sac road or, you know, horseshoe road that it's just the residents, then okay, money well spent. But we need to do it first and, and see how that works, so.
That's a good investment in the future.
I think so, because otherwise reconstructing every road and shadow will never happen. So if we find a more economical way to spread that money out, get a bigger bang for a buck, we just need to move forward with it. We know what we're getting on plumber in terms of that type of, you know, infrastructure. So it's the money, using it for, uh, Keystone, just makes more sense. But I think the question is, do we wanna allocate more MFT money at this point to extend plumber or push off next year? See what we get this year and then go ahead next year. Proxencost, more paperwork, potential delays, um, what more trades are gonna be? I'm not, no, cause that RBI money's gotta be out, so I'm not inclined to delay that any while we're risking more things and.
And that's why I brought it to you guys, you can discuss it and decide. My first law was not to do that.
Get the rebuild.
Allocate it, no.
Allocate it, you don't, you got four hundred, you have the plan, then like, oh, I'm done, let's make sure we get through that project, incorporate it.
Then we do the next step. Cause you're still working on patching some of the other stuff for this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Correct. Um, other projects, patching, um, Keystone project that we talked about, MFT also included the intersection of Savannah and Walnuts. Uh, we're gonna re-profile that and make it smooth like water over there. We had it, uh, on Gordon, so.
I do have one group of children that complain that the ramp on Walnut Gordon is gone.
Ramps gone, which they used to like when their dad would drive over it fast enough.
And now it's gone.
It is, it is. I was directed by the board to remove it.
I used to have a couple compliments on that, I just wasn't.
And thank you for that.
I think that's right smooth.
Every, every time I drive through there.
You, you drive through there and you're expecting, you're like, oh, it's smooth.
Thanks for what you can do.
Well, that's an engineering marvel, that's to me. You had two roads that were laid out with their own direction top ups and heat and mid and redesigned the whole thing and it rains.
I guess.
What you're about to reach out from there, you have this experimental five. I mean, who developed that technology, I wanna know.
James, James about to.
You're gonna become so independently wealthy.
You better, you better have control of your meaning. It's gone off the right.
Hey, we did good, it was an hour ten minutes, we're still, I got plenty in the ballpark.
So a little of that, uh, those are the major projects that we have going on.
Excellent.
Flight path, uh, we did go on some business with flight path, ordered that and I had a contractor last week, Dustin and I, and, uh, we're gonna get that done here next week or so, so. So starting that up and replacing that right there by the answer and say it's not one, so.
Uh, can I ask a pickleball question?
Pickleball.
Once you have the opportunity to begin that project?
Yes.
How long should it take roundabout?
So what we were discussing today, based on the number of foundations that we need to do and the type of work that we have and also our obligations with the street crew. We are kind of allotting about four or five, maybe six weeks for the street crew to do their part. Uh, then we would go through with the asphalt, which that should be done in a week. Um, and then the, um, you know, court service company would come in and finish that off. Now, we're coordinating with all parties involved, fencing and everything else, so we're backing in from when the court resurfacing company is available, which we're thinking like mid-August. Mid to late August, so then we're saying, okay, here's a week, we can have the asphalt back in there then. Here's, uh, you know, six weeks for our street crew to do that work and then having some foot time in there for the fencing. So all in all, you know, you're probably looking at a two-month process.
So, so the pickleball committee needs to know, they're not gonna have availability for a while, we weren't having availability for a while.
Right.
But the outcome of the season, right? It's worth the wait.
It's only you can do it, it's gotta be warm enough for asphalt.
There should be some, some people that are gonna have to realize that, that some nights it's gonna take a little bit of downtime.
Right, it can, it can be winter work, you can't leave asphalt, you can't, and you can't get it painted, so.
Yeah, so that just, and, and matter of fact, if, if that's quicker than I thought it'd ever be done, so.
And we're looking, you know, working with the, uh, street crew in terms of making it as efficient as possible, you know, one of the things that we'll do is get like a plumber truck out there. So once everything's excavated, it's like, you know, we're not running buggies back and forth, we're just bringing a plumber truck out there. Fill the hole, fill the hole, fill the hole, fill the hole, because there will be thousands, so.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
See you.
Does village manager wanna talk to you again?
No. But I will answer any questions or all the staffs here, if you guys have any questions on any topic.
Uh, I would like to say thank you to all of you, because I know that is a daunting, just difficult task, what you guys have to do, so thank you. You, you make it sound easy when you spit it all out real quickly, but I know it's a hard task, so thank you.
I can tell you two both know like back of your hands, you have, it's like the stuff in your sleep, so thanks for doing it.
Yeah.
Um, anything further? All right, there was no, uh, public properties, uh, any public commons on village business. Gary, you wanna say it, Trent, hearing that? All right, the next schedule and committee of the whole is May thirty.
And just for, for your knowledge, we will, we will have an ordinance to, to the appropriation or the. It's called.
Supplemental transfer?
Supplemental transfers and also accepting the budget.
The appropriations. We call it, dude, a budget is the detail of everything we plan to do, like you actually cast is the generic. Here's the total from each fund in each primary, it doesn't have, it doesn't have any of the details in it, it's just the appropriation that has to be made, so.
And we'll have an ordinance in case you guys vote no on the budget or the appropriation. So that we continue to spend like we have over the last few years.
Well, I just.
Unless you don't think we need that.
I just always like to sit down with you guys, you know, and I'm little.
We're not gonna vote down the budget.
No, I'm gonna go, that's great.
Looks good to me. The favors and.
You can call that, huh, cause it doesn't count.
Okay, there's no reason for closed session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
All right, nice.
I'll make it to our.
Trusting nice big motion, trusty Fletcher has seconded the motion, the seat is adjourned.
Thank you.
You guys.